We'll begin the second session. Welcome deputations and individuals for coming here. Please don the headset and select the channel you need. Zero, that's for the floor. Channel one for Cantonese and channel two, English. Deputations and individuals, please note that your oral and written submission is not protected by the power and privilege ordinance. You will be invited to speak very soon, three minutes for each speaker. When the buzzer goes off, I will have to stop you because of the time constraint. Please be succinct. If you want to make further submission, we welcome written supplement. The first, Mr. Li Wing Chen. Thank you, Chair, and lawmakers, especially for your concern on education and your support. I'm speaking on behalf of Kun Tong Schools Liaison Committee and for myself. I would like to state my support for the three-two-one proposal. Now, I'm going to talk about some personal feelings and comments. Over the past two days, lots of principals used different analogies to describe the relationship between the sector and the bureau. Some say we're like a couple and some resort to other analogies. Well, I think they're wrong. I think the Education Bureau is like our parents and we are their children. We are very good children in terms of medium of instruction, school-based and external assessment, etc. We try our best to do the best. In PISA, we always come to the top. But then, for most Hong Kong parents, they would like to see their children to come to the very top of the list, not just the top five. I don't know why... I don't know what's so good about the system in Finland, but I know what's good in Hong Kong because we look at our targets and we have low cost. The teachers do not require long-term training, that's why we achieve better. I don't know whether people ask the Finns if they would like to learn from Hong Kong, but then even if they want to, they cannot do that because of the population difference. We have cultivated many talents. We, our AOs, doctors, lawyers, architects, as well as professor at university, are cultivated in our system. You can ask professor how to conduct a study in this regard. And another thing is we do not span arbitrarily. The per capita cost is not high, but then, it's not low, but then every single penny is worthwhile. As a parent, I also think this child is a good one, at least is acceptable, he is acceptable. But then, when the child has difficulty and wants to seek the parent's help, the parents scold the child. We ask for bread, we get stones. When we ask for eggs, then we're given scorpions. I think the child is very unhappy and so it comes out to protest. Next, we have Ms. Tang Ying Ping. Good morning. I'm on behalf of the principals in Ching Moon to speak. We would like to maintain the quality of education in Hong Kong. In our district, over the past four years, we have a shortfall in Form 1 intake. We expect there will be a shortfall of six hundred in the coming year. I would like to thank the bureau for rolling out this measure of two classes, twenty-six students. This is a sort of complementary measure. But then, if you have a major measure and roll out the two measures together, you will indeed help us out here. We think you have to be flexible in adjusting the number of students allocated. For example, take into account, take on board our three-two-one proposal. It will help us a lot here. We hope the bureau can consider this. If you keep the existing allocation system, those schools in the upper banding will be oversubscribed, over-enrolled, but then those at the bottom, they will be threatened with school closure because they do not have sufficient intake. Now, if that's the case, and consider you are wise enough, you will see that the students with special learning needs and those in the third banding will be allocated to Band Two schools. Band One students will be in Band Two schools. And at the end, we'll be left with two schools with two bindings only. And several years down the road, we may not even have bindings for schools. All students will be crammed into all these schools. Now, we have a growing learning difference which affect how students learn. In using English as the medium of instruction, we'll see a fall in class numbers. The third problem concerns the students with different needs and those in Band Three. They do not have the suitable, there are no suitable schools for these students. The EDB invests lots of training for teachers in special schools, but then, in closing down the schools, you may not have sufficient time to train up teachers for the special schools. So you can imagine the education scene will be all chaotic. Students are not learning in suitable schools, so they do not like to study and they will drop out. And the whole society will be affected. Next, Principal Wong Chi Ching. Good morning. Going to use the example of a Band Three school to explain to you why it's not right for us to refuse three-two-one proposal. If you do not adopt this proposal, all Band Three schools will be eliminated. The mismatch of students and schools is serious. It will be detrimental to Hong Kong education system. I have to talk about the two misunderstandings of the public about Band Three schools. Many people think these schools are there to produce Band Three students. This is completely wrong. In reality, these schools are there to take students who are rejected by Band Two, Band One schools and who are allocated to us by the EDB. These schools are putting lots of effort into helping these students to grow up. And other misunderstanding or misconception is that many people may think Band Three schools, if they perform a good, if they do a good job, they should be upgraded. Then how come they are left in the same banding? Now, if a Band Three school is doing a good job, will a parent tell an outstanding child to get enrolled in this Band Three school? Imagine if this is, this will happen. Now, what will happen is that a student who come at the bottom will be told to enroll in Band Three school. That's why, once you are labeled as a Band Three school, you will stay in that banding, you will not be upgraded. And for the principals in those schools, they are proud of the fact that they can help those Band Three students, keep them on the right track. But then, with your measures, all the Band Three schools will be eliminated because the parents will ask their children to try to go to Band Two schools, even if they are, they come second last in the exam. In that case, the Band Three schools will be eliminated. In the coming six years, Band Three schools will have to sack twenty-two teachers and some teaching assistants in a particular Band Three schools. How can you run on that basis? That's why, without the three-two-one proposal, the Band Three schools will be eliminated. But then, there will still be Band Three students, they will go to other schools. Chairman and honorable lawmakers, first, I would like to tell you my feelings. I was not here to speak yesterday, I was up there listening to the principals yesterday. And secretary, you were here yesterday as well as today and you listened attentively to us. I'm very touched by it because you really listen to us. Now, if you do consider what we say and respond to our needs, I will be more touched. Let me give you an analogy. For example, you have a headache, you go to see the doctor and you are told that you should take a pill and the pain will go away. And if you have a problem with your leg and the doctor tells you, just take a pill and the problem will go away. Do you think this is a good doctor? Will the doctor give you a full body, physical examination? Will this doctor ask whether this pain is related to other parts of your body? You should not treat the problem in a piecemeal manner. If you come across such a doctor, you know you are left with a bad doctor, it's not a good doctor. The problem in the education sector should not be dealt with in a piecemeal manner. We have this problem, that's why we relax the criteria for school closure. But you have to ask what implications are there with the measures. Lots of colleagues have given you their views. Secretary, you should understand that in this sector, things are interrelated. That's why the secondary school associations and principal associations, representatives, principals from schools in different bindings are all out here to speak. You know why. Personally, as said by Mr. Wong, some schools are taking in mainly Band Three students. They may face school closure. But some other schools who do not face this problem also come out to speak. I think you know why. Several days ago, Mr. Tian talked about the English ability of students. EDB says there is a fall in English capability of our students. I want to say, education is all about commitment.
Next, Mr. Yu from the Feng Leng Kit Memorial Secondary Schools. Chairman, Mr. Secretary and fellow school principals. I'd like to talk about what we read from the newspaper, the article from the bureau. The title is keeping, you know, retaining schools, retaining the teachers and the students. I don't think we need to retain anything, we need to save our education. I'd like to, the secretary, to know the truth, that is, if we rely on a single proposal, we cannot, you know, retain our schools or our teachers. You say that your proposed measures can help the schools with difficulties in recruiting students by providing them with a safety net so that you can reduce the risk of the schools being closed down. That's not true. Instead, it would further, you know, cause confusion among the schools. Because once you start closing off these, closing down these schools, schools which have only two or three, two or one class per level, they will, they will have faced the problem of redundancy of teachers, there will be instability. And among the teachers, there will be conflicts and contradictions. Everybody will be working in a very tense environment. Teachers and students will start worrying and that would adversely impact the quality of teaching and learning. And the support and care given to students will also be jeopardized because the student population will continue to decline. Both parents and teachers and students will lose their confidence. Not only the S1 students who may want to change to other schools, those in other forms may also want to leave that school as well. In that case, not only do the teachers have to work hard every day teaching the students, they have to also work hard to do a lot of promotion work in, for the survival of the school. Over the last five years, the bureau had proposed a voluntary retirement scheme, causing many senior teachers to lose, to leave the profession. But now, this is extended to the, to the, more of the experienced teachers and that would have far-reaching consequences, where many, more and more schools end up with only two or one class per form and those with four classes per form may end up dropping to three classes per form. The students are not evenly distributed among schools, so there will be a mismatch. And as a result, you have to face the problem of students with different learning abilities studying in same, same school. Over the years, we've downwardly adjusted the number of schools, students allocated to S1 and we were able to address the problem caused by the population changes. As a result, we are able to implement a new senior secondary curriculum smoothly. I hope the secretary will really consider the proposal, the three-two-one proposal put forward by the frontline educators, teachers and principals and that you can upwardly adjust the number of students, you know, allocated to the schools as the population rebounds. Next, Chairman. I have actually, well, for the last three years, I have students who've asked me whether or not our schools will be closing down. I asked them why they asked this question, they said they've heard it from other parents and students. I asked them how they felt, they said they were very unhappy. They said that they were very unhappy at home, then when they come to school, they're very happy, so they're worried that the school will be closed down. They also asked whether or not it's because we've not done well that the bureau doesn't want to close us down. I told them, that is not that you've not done well, rather, the fault lies with us. So long as I'm the school principal, I won't let this happen to the school. I treat my students like my parents. Would there be any parent who would, a parent who worked so hard and in order to, you know, buy them iPads and whatever so that they can do well in school? But now, because of limited resources, we're telling the students to, 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 to really, you know, survive on, you know, a single can of milk formula and so on. I can tell you, if you only eat a single ten or two tins or two tins of milk formula, you definitely will die. Even if you won't die, your health will be severely damaged. I have become a teacher because I was inspired by a former teacher. I'm not a good student, but because in, when I was a student, many teachers were very supportive. As a result, I've been able to become a school principal today. But nowadays, our teachers after school will have to attend many meetings. I was once, one of the ten outstanding teachers. I now have become one of the ten outstanding salesmen. I have, I no longer organize school athletic meets, I have to organize all kinds of promotion campaigns, even going to the mainland. Why do I have to stand at the border in Lo Wu like those people paddling, you know, you know, you know, you know, packages of the telephone companies? Why do we have to, you know, end up doing this? We don't want, you know, you know, I think what we want is quality rather than quantity. And to improve quality, we need resources. All our teachers, all our students are valuable assets. They haven't started working yet, hard yet, when they are at S1 to S3. What, it's no, no big deal if you are enrolled and recruited by a Band One school. If I don't, you know, if I don't educate my students properly and well, they will end up protesting outside this building, they will apply for CSSA. How much money do we need to pay in terms of CSSA payments? So don't just focus on economizing your resources. I hope that we would be able to resolve the problem so that we'll be able to deal with the question of class size in a flexible manner. Next, we have Ms. Yin La Fan. First of all, I would like to represent the Southern District Joint Schools Conference. I think the government's proposed measures will result in a mismatch and affect, it will also, you know, you know, destroy the unity of teaching profession. That's why we need to reduce this number of students per class so that the entire system will, you know, shoulder the shock together so that there won't be any structural damages. For details, please read our written submission. Yesterday morning, we witnessed a very touching scene. I was also in the public gallery and I actually was cried on several occasions. We see that all of us have worked hard together to fight for the opportunities for our, to help students. We should avoid, you know, causing severe damage to the educational environment. We are concerned about education. First of all, we need to help our students and secondly, our teachers. So when the bureau, the next time you put up any ad in the newspaper, don't use the title of, you know, retaining the schools and principals and so on so the students benefit. Don't say that because there are not enough classes. If the bureau were put in shame, we're not in any better position. And what you propose may cause misunderstanding. The former secretary, Mr. Michael Yin, said that there are only three solutions to the problem. Cut, close down the schools, shrink the class size and reduce the number of students allocated to the students. But you're now proposing to use the old method to cut down on the number of classes to resolve the problem. Experience in the last eight years have shown us that figures can kill people. If you reduce the number of classes, then it will have a labeling effect. According to the PISA report, the most effective schools are forced to be closed down. The more serious damage is that all the students and all the teachers would not have done what they have, wouldn't know what they have done wrong. They've struggled over a long period of time and they're being, you know, stigmatized. So the wrong decisions which, you know, made in respect of primary schools can be remedied by the secondary schools. If you made a wrong decision for the secondary schools, the impact will be everlasting. I would not dare to dream that you would retract your proposal, but if you're going to, you know, cut down on the number of classes, don't hurt our teachers and students and to give them the dignity that they deserve. Chairman, I think, I think we should change the word decline to significant fluctuation. To resolve the problem, the best solution is to adjust the number of students you allocate per class. Otherwise, there will continue to be a lot of instability. We don't have very much time. Without a perfect solution, then can we have experience for one year, you know, with allocating a smaller number of students per class so that meanwhile, we can also look for a long-term solution? Mr. Lam, Chairman and fellow school principals. I represent the Council of Direct Subsidy Schools and I'd like to express my views on this issue. In 2013, 2014, according to the statistics, we can see that for the next four years, the student population will drop by eleven thousand. Those from the profession and the bureau should work together to stabilize the educational environment and also the teachers. We support the proposal of the school principals to flexibly adjust the number of students per S1 class and allow small class teaching for the schools. We are against adopting a broad-brush approach to lower the number of students per S1 class. For the subsidized schools in Hong Kong, they are all subsidized on a, on, on a, on a unit cost basis. In other words, if we have one less student, we'll get less, one less unit of subsidy. If you, if the number of S1 students were reduced, it would mean that we will have less recurrent revenue. As a result, it would affect the operation of the direct subsidy schools. Over the last couple of years, we've already responded to the government's appeal to cut down on our class size. For S1 and S1, we've cut down the number by twelve or thirteen and for S3, we'll cut down fifteen next year. So we're talking about two hundred, with our subsidy is down by two point four million dollar. This year, I already dismissed four teachers. So you can imagine how your proposal will affect the operation. For the DSS schools, if, if the class size were reduced, then our survival and development will be threatened. The DSS schools do not want to increase our fees just because of the drop in student numbers and thus add to the burden of the parents. Many of us adopt small class teaching, sometimes our classes have as few as twenty-odd students. Some school principals of DSS students told me that they already have two classes per level and if we were to cut down on the number of students per class, they don't know how they can survive. So I'd like to propose that for the DSS schools, in light of the circumstances of each school, because some have four classes per level, some have three, some have, and they're surviving. For those DSS schools, I think it should be for, up to them to decide whether or not to cut down on the number of students per class so that the recurrent subsidy they receive from government will not reduce. Otherwise, it would stifle the healthy, healthy development of the DSS schools. Next, the Church of Christ in China, K H Secondary School, Mr. Yun. Good morning, Chairman and Mr. Secretary. This morning, I'd like to explore the issue from a different angle. First of all, education should not be based on commercial considerations. We should look at education from the perspective of education. The former secretary for education, the former permanent secretary for education often said that the schools are chosen by the parents. If the parent don't choose that school for the children, the mission for that school is already finished and it's a question of elimination of the, of the weakest. If a product, you know, is popular, you will produce more. For those which are not popular, you will stop producing those products. When I look at disadvantaged schools and the effort put and time contributed by the teachers on the students, I dare say that the efforts that they've made are certainly not less than those of other teachers in other schools. I'd like to state that I do not serve in a school catering to the underprivileged, but the parents would like to choose the better, the so-called better schools, as a result of which, teachers who have the experience to help the disadvantaged students would not be able to stay. And the students are forced to attend schools which are not really suitable to them. So you end up with a loose, loose situation. The teachers will not be, the students will not be able to learn effectively. Say, if they go to a Band One school, it will also affect the, the teaching of the school teachers. How are we going to, you know, train the talents that we need to survive in, on the commitment of resources? I think you can see, be able to see immediate results very quickly. The students are affected by the social environment, they're influenced by the parent and the peers, their personal development and the choices. I don't think you will see immediate I don't think you will see immediate results after you've committed the resources to education. It takes a long time to to develop a person. So don't say that if you want committing, reinvesting in resources, you should expect immediate results. Uh very often, we hear about medium sized class uh classroom with uh for the A level classes, the class size is thirty, but but for the uh uh secondary education, for the new curriculum, we have a class size of thirty, but the these students have not yet been screened out. There's a lot of discrepancies in terms of learning abilities and some of them have emotional problems and the teachers who want to help them may not be be able to do that. So it's not unreasonable that we ask for a class size of thirty. Furthermore, our proposal doesn't re- involve additional uh financial resources. The recurring allocation is ba- is given on a class per class basis and not on a per capita basis. So I think the bureau is misleading us if they say that this would cost more money. I hope the bureau will adopt the three, two, one proposal. Next, Mr. Xin Kim Yui representing the the subsidized primary school council. Chairman, we support the three, two, one model. I think, I think uh the 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 prospect of secondary schools, uh schools that will be closed down, it's happening with the secondary schools, but it happened in primary schools a a long time ago. Uh school principals and teachers now have to focus, uh putting a lot of efforts to 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 recruit students. Even if uh we accept the bureau's claim that they will relax the restriction that they must operate at least three classes. Just imagine that for most of the Ben tree schools, if they if they recruit twenty six students per level. Per for, just imagine for each form, they only have twenty six students. Uh you may, you, there may be any problem for each class, but just imagine what kind of school it would be if there's only twenty six pupils pupils per per form. Uh how you organize in the class competition? If you have thirteen female and thirteen female students per form, you gotta even set up a football team or have a choir. Uh there are many activities that you simply can't organize. If you want to ensure quality for the school, while uh low, we have to load the number of students allocated to each class so that for the majority of the Ben tree schools, they can really operate like a school. Uh the primary schools are also worried that is if the government in future could stop the uh children born of mainland women in Hong Kong, then there will be uh again a drop in the uh the number of uh uh students in primary schools.
Okay, so if there is any fluctuation in the population, how should we address it? Because otherwise, in a couple of years' time, we'll have to come back to this issue again illogical. The government mechanisms simply cannot um address the problem. Uh this is something the government has to consider in the long term. Finally, if the bureau would like to reduce the class size, we would very much like to keep uh the S S P A system, um the the ratio there uh for um the uh percentage of um uh self allocation and also the the allocation quota for for joint uh schools and so on. That that would be in line with the parents' expectation. The ratio should not be adjusted in an arbitrary manner. Right, Mr. Lee Sai Ki, principal. The Education Bureau has been against this three, two, one proposal because they are not addressing the impacts um arising from the um class reduction. They're merely keeping the schools. The purpose is not ultimately for the sake of students or schools or or students because they realize that in four years' time, the the student population will rebound and they're not going to close the schools. Um because then then they went up with um not enough schools, so they have to keep the schools there. In secondary schools, they will have to contend with um the decline in population. The number is so uh more than forty five hundred. We may have um the figure bandied about, but we have to also include uh the vacancies in secondaries uh one level because the uh many schools are not filled to their capacity. In some schools, there are fifteen vacancies. If we have one hundred schools or in this category, then we're talking about fifteen hundred uh school places, there would be surplus to requirement. And next year, if you include the reduction of fifty four hundred, we're talking a total of seven thousand school places. And definitely, there would be a lot of classes that would have to be reduced. It's not um the the size portrayed by the Education Bureau. In twenty oh eight oh nine, according to the bureau, the uh reduction would be similar to next year, uh i.e. thirty four classes, and that doesn't present any major problem. If this is indeed the case, why is it that the Education Bureau would like to save up on the uh cost of thirty odd classes, despite the the cost for one school and and not willing to accept the three, two, one proposal? The bureau said that um they have seen a reduction in number before and very few schools were closed. In fact, when places were allocated, many schools um would be vulnerable to see a student uh number reduction and and school closure. And they have to do so many things, they're saluted to by other principals, they have to advertise, they have to um get out onto the street or solicit students from the mainland China. And sometimes the the bureau would send some new rifles um to these schools in order to escape the fate of being closed. Right, next, uh Abdei Chow, Kaifeng Primary School, Madame Feng. Chairman, thank you. I am a principal of um a headmaster of a primary school. I come here to speak in favor of um small class teaching and in support of the secondary school principals. In Southern District, the student population is declining and there are schools that are facing closure. And there is a drastic reduction in the number of students. Over the past couple of years, um there have been couple of primary schools that have been closed and students were sent to other schools. Psychologically, there was a tremendous impact. All these schools that were closed were good schools, well-run uh schools. The government didn't make any or didn't um put in place any appropriate measures because of the change in population and the students or the parents of the schools will have to bear the consequences. It is really unfair, grossly unfair to the students and parents of the Southern District. The population decline has some spread from primary to secondary schools. The government should implement a small class teaching instead of laying the blame uh to the doors of the schools, the teachers and the primary uh students. The mismatch, I was alluded to by many principals, I don't want to dwell on this, but there are some voices that said that many parents, I would like to go to, send their kids to prestigious schools with um class uh reduction, uh that the chances would be undermined. In fact, this is not the case, the mismatch means that um the Ben one schools may not only admit to Ben one students and the English medium schools will have to turn into Chinese uh medium schools because of lack of um enrollment. I am a primary school headmaster, we're implementing small class teaching at the moment and it is a really good way to improve the quality of education. Uh twenty five for primary school, thirty six for secondary schools at the moment. With the class size of thirty six, how can you expect the quality to be upgraded? The bureau has implemented twenty five class size, um small class teaching. When they move up to secondary, they have to uh to to be to contend with the a class size of thirty six and that that is a retrograde step. We have implemented the reforms for so many years, we have moved on to a small group discussion uh with interaction between teachers and students. A class size of thirty six is not conducive to quality education with dire consequences. Since the implementation of um integrated teaching, uh there are some S E N students uh in the midst. With um large class teaching would be very difficult to give individual attention to S E N students. Some principals said a moment ago that there may be surplus teachers and and uh course will be cut. Now, all these um are facts and I hope that um the bureau will face up to the aspirations of all the principals. Right, Children Caring Network, Mr. Liu.
Well, Chairman, thank you. Uh we have um heard from the principals and the educators. We haven't heard much from the parents. I'd like to get the message across, I've got a PowerPoint here with me. Now, with um a decline in secondary s- uh student population, what should we do? A stable uh learning environment is what we desire because that would give the teachers peace of mind um to teach the 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 students. Previously, the teachers were very happy, they may have ma zhong sessions after work, but they are concerned about the students and they they had the peace of mind when they they go about, went about doing the jobs. Today, teachers are very busy, they have to go with administrative work and and also mention the teaching duties and they are um the sort of democritics always hanging over them uh in terms of co- school closure. They don't have time to look after their students and nor do they have time for their their own kids. And in twenty oh nine, the we experienced um a decline in population, student population. The government said that there would be a dozen or so of schools that would be closed. In twenty oh nine, there were more than a hundred um that that were closed. And there would be further uh decline in student population. The government mentioned five uh secondary schools that likely to be closed. But according to the uh P T U's survey, there would be four hundred uh secondary schools that are likely to be closed in four years' time. Now, do parents support a small class teaching? I remember there was um an association that um surveyed seven hundred parents, eighty percent of them supported uh small class teaching. We've also contacted well over two hundred parents over the past month or so, we asked them whether it is important to have a stable learning environment in school. Ninety percent of them supported this notion of a stable learning environment. In our secondary school, we have thirty five to forty in a class. My son's class got forty four, very, very crowded, the parents. I would like to have a class size of twenty five to thirty, that's the optimum figure and that would give teachers the peace of mind and that would give more opportunities for the kids to to put questions. So do they support our school closure? According to our observation, the answer is no, please listen up, the parents wouldn't like to see schools being closed. Also, the government sees this opportunity, we have colossal reserves and we should take this opportunity of a decline in the student population to implement small class teaching in secondary schools. Mr. Liu referred to the Professional Teachers Association, four hundred schools are going to be closed, we have only four hundred schools in Hong Kong, maybe a hundred, I I stand to be corrected. Mr. Liu, uh will you uh show us on the PowerPoint later on for information? All right, moving on to um the Kuicheng um student, parent student union. Chairman, thank you. I am um the Federation, Chairman of Federation Parent Teacher Association of Kuicheng District Limited. Now, in our system, there are three um tiers and they said that parents are given free choice for these three bands. For each category of um students, it's only right for them to be divided into different bands with the decline of um population, um there is this prospect of school closure of Ben three students. Uh would there be any um less Ben three students? Or is it the case that you can still keep the same number of Ben one students uh in the context of the decline in secondary student population? Now, with um the the uh reduction in in population, I am sure that there would be uh corresponding decline in the different bands of students. If you close the Ben three schools, where would they go? They 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 will then have to move to the Ben Ben two schools. And the students that that require special attention cannot get what they want and the and the gifted students are likely to be dragged down and it would be a dumping down effect. I agree with um the Principal Association's proposal, the three, two, one proposal. Perhaps I I I I pause here and I I must say that I support the three, two, one uh model. Mr. Li Ting Liu, Chairman, as principals, we'd like to see the bureau and the uh educationalists work together for the benefit of the students. Now, given the decline in student population, I hope the bureau would seriously consider the um Association's proposal. Over these couple of years, that we should adjust um the allocation uh quota to tie in with the situation. We can keep um a stable macro situation while at the same time, we improve the quality of education. There was a principal who made a point a moment ago that we're not merely asking for small class teaching, we are merely uh taking reference of the the existing system in upgrading the quality. Um in the system, we have thirty uh in um class size and we had the um the H E C E that eliminated some of the um less gifted ones. Now, for subject grouping of a normal have anything between ten to twenty or something, but in this N S S academic structure, we have a class size of thirty eight and the ratio is two point zero. All students will have to to um take these some difficult, tough subjects and there is discrepancy in the student abilities with subject grouping. We still have thirty, twenty, thirty students in one group. Is it a retrograde step or is it really moving forward? Why do we seize the opportunity now to optimize on the situation and optimize the environment for N S N S S um academic structure? I don't agree that we should uh we we can reduce the opportunity for people to go to the favorite school uh by adjusting the number flexibly. Now, the association is proposing adjusting the number in the light of the the student population. This is not a cross-the-board arrangement. The chances of um students going to the favorite schools will not be undermined. It is a good move um to adjust um the criterion uh for for um opening classes. Now, uh we have to bear in mind the implications that that this would have. Now, as a principal, many principals said, um there is this problem of a mismatch as some students move up the um the the scale. Now, that there are problems with um the learning environment of the N S S um structure. Over the past couple of years, Mr. Michael soon worked together with uh the the education sector and put in place the voluntary optimization scheme and that resolved the problems. I hope today, Mr. Ding will likewise work together with us in common with feasible measures, practical measures to to address the problem. Right next, Mr. Sam Sing Wah, principal, Chairman, fellow colleagues. Couple of days ago, when the teachers became aware of my presence here, they put couple of questions to me and they hoped that I would say this to the secretary. Now, the questions. they hoped that I would say this to the secretary. Now, their questions are as follows. In the coming couple of years, there will be eleven, a reduction of eleven thousand uh students uh from P six to S one. According to the bureau, in the coming few years, there will be a phenomenon uh that some schools will go and some schools will be down, down to two or three classes. Now, the, the teachers uh asked me the question. Previously, we said there would be very difficult to have a good mix of subjects for, for the students. If there are only three classes, what about two classes? Would, would, would it, would it make it, make things worse? They also asked the other question. In the coming couple of years, since some schools are going to be reduced in, in, in the number of classes or will be closed, the teachers will have to um, to have a find, find alternative um jobs. It would be very difficult for them to, to find, find alternative jobs in this sector. If they are under fifty and they may take early retirement, if they, they take on the offer, they, they will have to leave the profession and go elsewhere. I'm sure the young teachers might not be tempted by the um early retirement uh package. I would expect that they would take to the street in protest. In four years' time, we're going to see a rise in the population. And we have to expand again. The question that is put is why is it that there cannot be any mutual accommodation between the teachers and the bureau? And for some years, there can be um a reduced class size so that they can transition to the, to the new uh era. They're very, very puzzled and they're very disturbed. I mean, they'd like me to say this. I tried to um abbreviate what they have to say. They said that education is um to impart knowledge. It is um a, an undertaking of conscience. It is a long-term investment. The teacher's job is to impart knowledge uh to help students resolve all the problems in their life and they are the bacon in the student's uh life and development. And small, in terms of different subjects, small group teaching would reduce the teacher-student ratios so that there would be more room to, for, for teachers to design their, their, their classes and they would also be able to look after those students with special needs. To reduce the class, uh, to reduce the number of classes, some they will be adversely affected. Will they be able to provide um the quality education? There is still a question mark over that. I mean, this is a very long-winded um article. Perhaps I, I email um these to the council. Right, moving on. Next to Mr. Mac Chi Kung, Principal, Chairman, fellow colleagues. Indeed, um, I've never had any experience of standing outside the council. This is the first time for me. Clearly, there are a couple, a couple of um, um, terms. Seize the opportunity, optimizing um the secondary education. We don't want to deal the education sector blow. But I never expected so many people uh were standing there. This is something very, which is some very important to the education sector. My school was in Shaotin in oh eight, oh nine. Um, now we uh experienced the pressure of um a decline in population. In eight, oh eight, oh nine, we suffered a blow. We saw uh what the fellow, my fellow colleague said, uh, that there were problems of mismatch as students moved up. My colleagues are working very, very hard. I hope the bureau would, would realize that it would be difficult to, to address the problem. It's not as if you press a button and the problem will be resolved. The teachers will have to get to grips with um the, the problems of the students and then they have to, to deal with the problems like this. And in that year, the, the students were, were really heartbroken because we never, we never had any students from that kind of background. And that, that would undermine the quality of education. So we hope that um since this is a um, a, a short transitional process, why can't we enable the secondary schools uh to be free from the, the implications and the impacts? Second, I've also read um the publication of Education Bureau um in oh eight, oh nine. The number of um, the class size was thirty-four, thirty-five. I mean, as we go up, um, there will be um a cancellation of six classes and that would mean six teachers. Now, that may be a small percentage of the entire, the overall scheme of things, but that will undermine the um, the, the passion and also the, the uh, the spirit of, of the teaching force. The number of thirty-four is no small figure and I hope that the bureau would understand this. There are some policies, like the language and policies and so on. Um. And we do need a stable environment for teachers to, um, to teach in. Now, we have um the N S S um academic structure. We agree with um the direction that we're going because this is aligned with the development in the new century. But I hope that the bureau would uh realize uh that um these new courses uh would require more attention from the teachers. The students can, can learn themselves, but they, they do need guidance.
Next, Mr. Chen Ko Young from Yan Chai Hospital, Lanchipad Memorial Secondary School. Good morning, Chairman and fellow colleagues. Today, many of our teachers have to arrive at school for a special event to greet the eight hundred parents and students in the district. At present, they have to give extra lessons at the weekends and they also have to go to other activities for the students. Why do they devote so much attention to that? Because they want to reduce the chances of having surplus teachers in our school. I come here today to speak on behalf of my colleagues as well as our students. The chief executive made an announcement. Now, the secretary advocates keeping schools, teaching posts, et cetera, but you haven't talked about keeping the quality of education. For some schools, in order to ensure sufficient intake, the teachers have to work hard during the summer holidays. But then where should the teachers focus on? It should be education, not to get intakes. But then because of the decline in student population and the measures proposed by the bureau, I don't think you will stabilize the education front. You will only destabilize the uh scene. People are worried. In that case, how can the teachers focus on teaching and give attention to the students? How can we have quality education? High school principals are united today, which is unprecedented, because we want to solve the problem in hand. We have just passed the first D S S, D S E, and we are now reviewing our results. But then at present, the experienced teachers may have to go. This will pose dire consequences to our schools and not just educators then to suffer, but our students, our education system. I think the Association and, uh, Association of School Councils proposal of three-two-one pro- proposal will stabilize the scene. Learn from experience. Secretary, please take on board the proposal. We don't want all these conflicts repeat themselves in the education sector. In the past, the bureau worked very well with the sector. I hope, Secretary, you will listen to us and turn adversity to opportunity. Next, we have the principal from Mo Kwong English School. Mr. Ng, good morning, Chairman Lawmakers as well as Secretary and fellow teachers. I would like to talk about the practical side and my support for the three-two-one proposal. I would like to start with three minor issues first. Several days ago, I attended a consultation session on N S S. A principal asked this question. If under N S S the number of, no, do we have more students under N S S than the old system? If that's the case, which subjects will undergo restructuring? I think the feeling was shared by all the teachers and principals. Second question, since last week, last Sunday, our teachers have been coming back to schools for Parents' Days and relevant activities at weekends. Third issue, principals, some principals were up there at the Public Gallery. I also applied for a seat there. I was in the corridor, listening to the meeting because it was crowded yesterday. What do these tell us? A simple fact. Global population is undergoing changes. The birth rate in most countries are falling. You don't have to look further to see the fact. This shrinkage in population lead to aging population. There is also this imbalance between the two sexes. Now, of course, there will be fewer students. That's why in some countries they adopt to these changes and that's what Hong Kong is doing. A responsible government should act early. While you can act later also, but you will lead us to a difficult time. I hope you will turn adversity to opportunity with limited resources in order to stop this possible disaster in the education sector. In two thousand and ten, the aid schools faced this difficulty of millions of deficit, but still, we supported the bureau. In the limited time slot, I would like to say this. We're not only working as partners with the bureau, like a copy, couple. In fact, uh, when I was a new principal, the secretary was my teacher in Human Resources Management. I hope my former teacher will support the three-two-one proposal and to help us realize our vision. Now, the last speaker is Madame Yaokyin Yang from the Association of Chinese High Schools in Hong Kong. Thank you. Teachers and students in a different schools of different bindings have dignity. That's why I hope education policies will not put on the negative label on teachers and students. Several years ago, you rolled out the C M I education. It was good, but then when you launched it, you created the negative labeling effect. Chinese School, High School Association all along believes C M I will help learning, but because of the labeling effect, the Chinese schools have difficulty in getting intakes. And the situation is getting worse. The bureau adopts the policy of twenty-five plus one. It also created the negative labeling effect. Our association don't want to see any more negative labels to be put on us. The secretary made it clear the bureau does not have any plan to close down schools. But then, when schools are left with so many labels, they will be phased out naturally. Has the permanent secretary given you any figures as to how many schools will be phased out naturally because of the negative labels? Do you have any statistics? Secondly, don't label our teachers. The voluntary re- uh, early retirement scheme breaks the heart of teachers. You're telling teachers because of the fall in student number, we don't need so many teachers. We'll give you monetary compensation. Please leave your job. Now, for these teachers who leave, most of them are there to help the band three students. They devoted time and attention to the students. Now, where's their dignity? Two hundred and seventy principals are here for the education in Hong Kong. And the teachers are also working hard in this sector. We know even in free lessons, the teachers are giving attention to students. They are not trying to get the place under the early retirement scheme. It's just that they want to take good care of these students. Secretary, maybe you do not have to go to the council. I will. In fact, you have already heard a lot from principals over the past few days. Let's see the effect of small class teaching together. Well, thank you. Thank you for the deputations. Well, some of you gave a very touching speech. I'm also very much touched. Secretary, concerning the speeches made by deputations and individuals, would you care to respond? Thank you, Chairman. Once again, I would like to thank you for coming on a Saturday morning and yesterday as well. I truly hear your genuine views. All along, our spirit is that we should work together to solve the problems ahead. I'm really grateful to you. I have to stress cer- certain points. We're looking at the same principle. Keep teachers, schools and strength and education. So, we have the same view. There's no difference between us. It's just that having listened to you, even that we haven't talked about keeping strength and teaching post. And we should focus on the discussion of shrinking class size. Well, I hope we will have practical discussion in the coming weeks. Another point I have to stress is small class teaching. I've, this has been hanging on my mind for a long time. This is something that will pose widespread implication. That's why I hope in the education panel, we can have further discussion sooner. But this is a major issue and we do have to prioritize our task. Finally, I have to say all my colleagues will work together with you during this tight schedule. Okay, let's move on to the question and answer session. I would like to know how many of you have questions before I award the speaking time. So who would like to speak or answer questions? Please raise your hand. Six. In that case, may I propose five minutes for each, for each Q and A session? Before you speak, I have to remind members under section eighty-three A, if you have any direct or indirect monetary conflict of interest, then please say so before you speak. Another point is, you may ask questions to the secretary or also you may ask questions to the secretary or also the individuals and deputations here. The first one on the line. I want to say something about priority. Usually, the vice, as the vice chairman, I'm the last to speak in interaction. Sometimes I would like to give some information to members for reference. So may I propose a change? Well, I have to ask other members because according to the practice, usually the vice chair will come to speak in the end. Let's read out the line. Brazila Lung, Li Wai King, and Sit Lao Ho. Portia, Portia Yu, you don't need to speak, all right? Brazila Lung, Brazila Lung, Starry Lee, Chen Kao Lo, Sit Ho, Lan Kao Ho, Vice Chair. Madame Lung, do you want to give him the priority? When will I end up in? I have another meeting just after him. I know, well, let's not complicate things. You can start now then. Secretary, we have listened to the views of so many people from this sector. I'm very much touched. We agree education is not about exams. Some tutorial centers are very popular. But some schools are left with low intakes. The education sector is distorted. Some students may get good academic results. But when they come to get a job, when they are working, they may not fit in or fit into the demand of our community. We have also come across many interviewees with good academic results. But then at the interview, then you do not want to hire these people. Now, coming back to the high schools, I think we have to look at the meaning of education in the past. People wanted to get to, to go to elite schools. I remember when I was a little girl, a friend told me, even if you're selling peanuts, if you're good at your job, you can be an entrepreneur, entrepreneur. So it all, it's all about whether you can seize the opportunity. If you've worked long enough, you will know that those successful people may not have good academic results. Academic results may be important, but we should not disregard other people. Lan Ma Island produced many talented artists. So you see, different environment will cultivate, cultivate different talents. That's why we have to look at different kinds of high schools. I hope, Secretary, you will give particular attention to special high schools. Lan Tao Island, there, the students have different backgrounds. When they have to go to other districts to study, they may not adjust very well. And so their gifts are left wasted. Six years down the road, five years down the road, we do not know whether, but then mainland babies born here will come back to study. But still, we should let students study in the district they grow up in. I hope this will be the principle for you. Chairman is very interested in sport. Now, sport. If we can have talents in sport. Now, these talents may not study in mainstream schools. Do you plan to ask questions? Let me finish first. You have to leave some time for the secretary to answer. Five minutes, right? I understand, yes. So, Secretary, can you be more specific? Concerning the direction of special schools, what do you have for them? I hope schools with low intakes can also stay. Do you have any support for them? Thank you for the question. Two points. First, for N S S, we want to cultivate different talents. I visited a high school and the students got seven awards in fashion design competition. And I visited two schools in Changchau. They have difficulties in running, but then they are consol, holding subjects together. I think they are working with a sense of mission. So I think we should give them encouragement. But as to how and why, maybe we need more encouragement and planning. In the whole transitional process, I think you have to plan with them. Say, in different schools, different districts, if you only give them resources, they can set up their own characteristics. Next, Miss Starry Lee. I want to give a reminder to members. Please focus on the topic today when you speak. Mr., Miss Starry Lee. Thank you, Chairman. And thank you for coming here on a Saturday morning. This is the fourth public hearing on this particular subject. This subject is of great concern in this sector. And the deputations have given lots of moving speeches. For the goals raised to stabilize the education sector for the future of our students, I'm sure we agree with these goals. My daughter is also in primary school. When teachers know the school is going to be closed down, they will feel that their jobs are not stable.
And they have to be busy looking after, looking for alternative, you know, jobs. And therefore, they will not be able to concentrate on, on the task of education and students. So this is, this not only affects students, but also the teachers, but also the students. So we have a common goal here. The question now is that we have a declining student population. And we aren't, we all agree that this is going to be a short-term problem. The question is, how are we going to go, you know, you know, you know, go through this temporary, you know, period of when we're going to have decline in student population? This is a crisis, but if we regard it as an opportunity, then we'll be able to help our students in the schools to really, to enhance the quality of education so that parents, teachers, and students will all be able to benefit and that the quality of our students can further be enhanced. Having heard all the deputations, I hope the secretary will, you know, tell us about your thoughts about what short, medium, and long-term measures you will implement. For the short-term measures, you have to address the immediate problem of the decline in student population. Many deputations have put forward the three-to-one proposal. But other than the three-to-one proposal, in a nutshell, I understand that what they want is flexibility for schools to, to, to start a class and that there should be a mechanism for upward and downward adjustment so that during this interim period, there could be stability in a school and that the teachers' jobs could be secure. So I think our objectives are the same. The medium and long-term objectives are even more important. We cannot go back to the old days when people liked to have many children. And I don't think we can rely on mainland children born in Hong Kong to boost our student population. I think we have to, since we are faced with reality that in the medium and long term, student population will decline. So how are we going to improve fundamental education? As a parent, we have to ask why so many of them would like to send the children to international schools, resulting in a shortfall of places in these schools. Actually, our students, our teachers and principals are, have all very, very, work very hard to educate our children. The question is that we do not have, have not deployed enough resources on, on basic education. And the schools have to work within limited means. Our educators would need adequate resources before they can, you know, you know, properly educate our children and that our parents are willing to let their children stay in those schools. So this is an opportunity in the medium and long term to improve the quality of education and reducing the class size is one, one solution. I also like to say this to the teachers, especially to the language teachers. Very often, they would like to reduce the number of sessions they have to teach. I understand that they, they have to teach twenty sessions per week. Other than teaching the classes, they also have other duties. I'm also very concerned about the ability, the communication skills of our children and whether or not they're in touch with our society and their ability to communicate. We need to holistically, you know, develop the personality of our students before they can, you know, be competitive. Of course, parents would like the students to do well academically. But if I have a choice, I, I think a healthy personality is even more important than academic achievements because they can catch up with the economic, economic knowledge later on. But if they don't know how to communicate, if they don't have the confidence, then they wouldn't be able to do well when they attend, attend job interviews and so on. Under the new curriculum, the, 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 there is a very large class size for, and I think, I hope you will, you will, you know, you will, you will, you know, come up with a solution to this problem. Yeah, I hope that you will be able to give us an answer to next week. Mr. Chen Kao Lo. I think the position of the civil party, it's very clear. We are in support of small class teaching. I'm a beneficiary of small class teaching. When I graduated from university, I went to Oxford. And Oxford is well-known for one-on-one tutorial. The depth and breadth of the education and, and was, was very important for the, and I think Oxford is well-known, not only because of its publications. I don't think that's the case. It's rather the, 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 the tradition of education. Even in the days of Margaret Thatcher, when they tried to ask the universities to provide ready for money and to improve on efficiency. Or like the fellow principals said, all the teachers and principals are very hardworking. They're willing to accommodate and, and bend over backwards to, 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 to work hard. But from the public policy's perspective, I think we can learn from others' examples. In Oxford and Cambridge, they, 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 there is equality between professors and students. We're talking about building up a relationship and, and, and maintaining the, the, the academic tradition. So, in the course of our development, we might have been inspired by certain teachers. And that's why we choose to become teachers ourselves so that we can pass on the tradition. Some young teachers said that, that, that if you can't be an inspiring teacher, then you, you, you've not done your job well. But I think the most important concept today is, is the word profession. The question is, after the reunification, has our education system developed to such a stage that the morale of the teachers and, and school principals and students are, are, are adversely affected? We talk about, Mr. Secretary, I'm worried that if this problem goes on, you wouldn't be able to keep your job. We now, we now have an opportunity to improve the quality of education. We should, we need the flexibility in the space because we want to improve quality. I understand that I don't have very, very much time. But, Secretary, I find it very difficult to have a dialogue with you. Very often, I'm looking for answers, but I, I, I never get any answers from you. I ask you about the rationale for small class teaching in secondary schools, but you've not given me an answer. And I hope Mr. Ye can, can elaborate on this later. I'm also waiting answers regarding international experiences and also whether or not true, a flexible arrangement, that the, the, all the enhancement measures would not incur additional expenditure. Well, you, you, some school principals are already worried that, 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 that some of the band three schools will be eliminated because of the new proposal. Some people call it a disaster. I don't, won't blame you if you can't answer the questions today because you will be repeating the same, your, 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 your position. So why don't you give us a formal paper with proper, you know, figures and so on so that we can all study it? Secretary, would you respond? I certainly would do that. But I'd like to also say that regarding small class teaching, in, in the last couple of weeks, I've read from Professor Chin Kai Ming of the Hong Kong Union, Professor Hao and Mr. Tai He La, a school principal, and and associate professor from the Institute of Education have actually expressed a lot of comments saying that a small class teaching is good. But then, we want to be able to, you know, confirm the value of small class teaching in primary schools. But we still need to plan for small class teaching for secondary schools. Sit Ho. I'd like to thank all the school, school principals. I was not here during the first session because I was talking to the school principals who have already spoken earlier. We work under, you know, a constraint here because we only have three minutes each and we won't be able to have any in-depth discussion. And that's why during the earlier session, I went out to talk to some of the other school principals. After I've obtained some principal, some information from them, I'd like to ask the secretary a few questions. Last time, we were, we were talking so much because we are facing a deadline. On the twenty-second, you have to start printing the information you intend to dispatch to parents. So you have to come up with an ultimate solution before that day. Are you going to insist on your proposal? Are you going to accept the consensus? Are you going to adopt a more progressive proposal from the P T U? But we don't have very much time. It's already the third. Several principals told me that it should be a week before the twenty-second that you need to come to a final decision. So on the fourteenth of November, we're going to have a panel meeting, at which time I think secretary should have, should have the option ready. Because after you have the proposed option, you should need to talk to the parents. Because some parents are misled that they won't be able to knock on the doors of the schools of the choice. So we only have eleven days left, you know, fourteen minus three. I understand the secretary would need to meet with the school principals again next week. And several principals told me just now that if you can't settle this issue, then they will all simply pack up and go. Would you like to see that happening? So I also like to invite the Prime Secretary, Mrs. Chair, to come forward and face the public. I understand that she was originally responsible to enforce the policy. And, Secretary, you are the person to, responsible for formulating the policy. I really am sorry for you because you've only took up this, taken up this post for four months, although you previously, you have been involved in education. But I understand that the civil servant responsible for enforcing the policy, implementing the policy actually can, can, can participate. But he's not coming forward to face the public or the school principals. He would only, you know, talk about a lot of theories when he, you know, sit, he talk, attend closed-door meetings of school principals. Why is he not facing the public? That's why originally you were saying, was right in saying that the civil servants already have a political mission to, to, to accomplish. Secretary, you've not answered my question. But given this tight schedule, we only have less than two weeks to go. Could you invite Mrs. Chair to come forward together with yourself to meet with the school principals? Don't just, you know, listen to the, to the school principals alone while Mrs. Chair will say it on other occasions that this won't work and that won't work. I hope the school principals present here would agree that I've spent the forty-five minutes earlier, you know, that the forty-five minutes I spent talking to the panis were not in vain. So, So it's, it's the twenty-second of November deadline. No, Chairman, they, he need to, you know, you know, print the, the, the. So yeah, it's the twenty-second of November deadline and if not, how are you going to deal with the, this? The twenty-second of November is a deadline, but I understand that the chairman of the placement of school, place, school placement committee will meet. But I understand that the chairman is willing to extend the deadline by a week. Mr. Yun, the school principal, the chairman of the committee is willing to extend the deadline by a week, but, but extend it by one week. So to answer your, your question. And secondly, I also have the intention to, at the next panel meeting, we will be able to come up with a formal decision. And that's why during the interim, I'm very keen to, to arrive at a definitive proposal together with the school principals. I hope the principal, the, the secretary will be able to really, you know, build up a consensus with the school principals. The question about Mrs. Chair, well, Mrs. Chair would really like to come with me today, but there are delegations from seventy schools from the mainland visiting Hong Kong. That's why he cannot come today. But next time, I believe he will be, you know, attending the discussion together with myself. Next, Mr. Leung Kwok-ho, Chairman.
While I was writing an article in the public gallery, someone called me up and used very, you know, vulgar language to scold the secretary. And I said I couldn't do that. I have to say it in a civilized manner. When I was a kid, I read an article. So if you're in high position, you're worried about the, the people. So I think you know that, so you have to worry about, you know, the sufferings of other people before you, you're wrong. So I think whatever, the proposal that you've come forward may not always be right. All the principals have talked about the three-to-one, you know, proposals. Mr. Leung Kwok-ho, would you please, you know, speak in front of the microphone? Can you hear me? I think you are able to recite that, that passage I quoted. So, so things that you, you or your boss have invented or what he wanted to do or not to do, don't take it so seriously. And also, I think you end up with this predicament now. It's not your fault, it, it, the fault lies with the system. Today, you called the name of Mr. Tai He-lap. It was the days of Mr. Leung Kam-hong who asked this businessman to improve our reform, our, our education system and he adopted an input-output approach. And you have the nerve to quote the views of those people. What is education exactly? Do you know? We're talking about, you know, cultivating the personality of a person, it could take a hundred years. Will you be able to? Of course, you need to be far sighted. What do you mean by a consensus? Everybody talks about the need for a consensus. It's a sociological term, meaning how we are going to, what's the future we want? If education is, is intended to, to, to serve people, well, you've slaughtered them so many times already, it, it, it doesn't help very much to say that you're going to, you know, save them this time. If people want to make a lot of money, they wouldn't even join the teaching profession. I think the problem now is that we now have this opportunity in front of us and people are suggesting you should give a try, but you refuse to say that because there's no consensus. Does that mean that you don't have a consensus to really care about education? That means that you don't know what you should do in terms of education. What sort of government do you work for? I live in the Ka Ye Estate. There, the international school where you give them, you know, subsidy more of more than one billion dollars to build a school and, and, and you allow people who don't want to go through ordinary curriculum study there. So you may choose not to answer my question, but you should, you know, answer the question now. Are you going to allow him? I'm not going to let him answer the question. So I have this quotation for you. You, you are so shameless, right? So you should be ashamed. In front of these, you know, you know, school principals who are so well-educated, you are beating around the bush. Do you really want them to really take to the streets, to go to the students? Okay, do I have one more minute? Okay. Are you going to ask any questions? I think you need to, what you need to change is that you should increase the, your commitment to education. And I think you change the focus of education instead of asking people to memorize things and to, and, and to eliminate them through examination. I think, given a huge fiscal reserve, what is dispensable to the government is more than six hundred billion. That's, that's according to the Hong Kong MA. If we talk about, talk about consensus, that is the consensus. That is ultimately what are you going to do? That is, in our society, should we adopt small-class teaching so that both teachers and students will benefit? That's the crucial point, are you going to do that? That is the consensus. Your time is up, Mr. Leung.
Well, I'm not expecting any reply. I'm just done with my remarks. Mr. Yip Kin-yun, Chairman. We've had two days of meetings involving the principals. As someone from the educational sector, I can say this to the Bureau confidently that the teachers and the principals do have a united request. And this includes two points. The first one is to, we should reduce the class size as the leverage to, or as a tool to resolve this problem. And I hope that there would be a distinct reply from the administration. We may not have the luxury to wait until the day before the deadline is upon us. We hope that in the next couple of days, we would be given a statement of the Bureau's stance. Also, the criterion of two classes as the starting point, you have already given us some reply. And for some, the schools, they have the class size of twenty-five. And I hope that the administration will address our requests regarding the small class sizes. If our aspirations will not be addressed, then the principals and the parents would be feeling very strongly about it. We will not be resting with, we will not be resting our case there. I'd like to let the secretary know this. The reason why I said that we have confronted with a historical problem is because we did have school closures and reduction in classes in primary schools. Are we going to repeat the same in secondary school? I don't think we have learned any lessons from the primary schools. And we're seeing a repeat of what we experienced. Now, this is not a, the, the, the same parallel because for primary schools, they, they are quite independent by themselves. In secondary schools, everything is bound up together. We've split up the students into three groups. When schools admit them, they, they have the schools of different competence. And the landscape in secondary school education is different from that of primary. So in, in secondary schools, one of the banding, they are coming out into the public domain because in, in this secondary school sector, if you eliminate all the weakest, then the strong ones will also suffer because there is very much a mismatch as the students move up the, the scale. Now, you get rid of the band three students and then you get rid of the band three schools, the band three students will have to move up to the upper band. And there is a mismatch for, for the students. Now, for schools, there is a downward kind of mismatch. One-third of the band one students may be admitted to band two students. Band two students, two-thirds will be admitted to band three schools. You won't get rid of the students, but the, the schools will have to, to, to get used to the situation. The banding of the schools will depend very much of, on the, the banding of the students. So all these social problems of band three students, now all these band three students may be suffering from intellectual problems or, or family problems, social problems, and they will be moving up the banding. And we simply cannot really withstand the impact. We cannot go on like this, I must emphasize this in point. At this point in time, that this is not really a short-term phenomenon, one month or two months or one year or two years. We're talking about four years of population decline in the secondary school. And if this goes on, the problems, we're storing our problems for eight whole years and the whole cycle will be completed for, for a school. I hope that the secretary would realize that we are at a historical juncture. We cannot afford to make any mistake at these crossroads. Right on this note, I, I think we can bring the meeting to a close. Before we close, I'd like to say this. In these two days, we have one hundred and forty or one hundred and fifty deputations attending our public hearings. And we have stakeholders coming from the education sector, parents, principals, students, and various education groups. I am sure that the Bureau must have heard the valuable comments from the stakeholders. We'd like to, to be student-based, we'd like to be education-based. With this decline in secondary population, I hope that the, the secretary will take a wise decision and come with timely policies to mitigate the impacts as much as possible. And that way, we can provide quality education and, and train up the right people for the benefits of Hong Kong. Thank you, Secretary. Thank you all very much. In terms of small-class teaching, I've written a book about small-class teaching. Well, if you want to give yourself a plug, you, you, you can wait. No, I'd just like to donate this book to the secretary. I've got some copies with me. If you're interested, please approach me. Meeting adjourned.